Hello.
Hi. Isim, here. Severson?
Here.
Kaefer?
Here.
Gage?
Here.
Coos?
Here.
Zingy? Here. Thank you, please join me in my pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I bring this down to communications. Under communications, we have a proclamation for the benefit of the national services and the Americor program. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and essential to how we meet our challenges, whereas the nation cities are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs. Whereas Americor and senior corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters. Whereas national service expands economic opportunity to create more sustainable, resilient communities and provide education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. Whereas Americor and senior corp participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. Whereas national service participants increase the impact of organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. Whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. Whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intense commitment to service and commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. Whereas the corporation of national and community service shares a priority with county officials and mayors nationwide to encourage citizens, engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities. Their resolve, that I, Lou Williams, the mayor of the city of Ketchikan here of Dubai, recognize the benefits of national service and Americor program in Ketchikan. That's the Ketchikan Community Capacity Building involving Ketchikan Youth Initiative, Southeast Alaska Independent Living, Ketchikan Wellness Coalition, and other local organizations in the coming year. And encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our community, to thank those who serve and to find ways to give back to their communities. Is there anybody here that is going to accept this tonight?
You've probably seen these people around town, so you know that they're busy, busy, busy helping us, and it's just awesome. And I told them that they didn't have to give you a report of their update tonight. But I would like to tell you that this team of three is going to be expanded to six this coming fall. We're going to be adding Community Connections, WISH, both and per-city players. And then we're also adding Summer Associates that'll be working between eight and 10 weeks during the summer. And those will be placed at the Wellness Coalition, at Ketchikan Youth Initiative, and at Ocean Alaska. So I'm just extremely pleased about the nonprofit response and the value that these people are showing and how it's attracting additional involvement.
Any questions? Any questions, councilman? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, that brings us down to persons to be heard. Landon Morgan, you want to start us off?
Hello, I'm Landon Morgan. I'm here on behalf of the Ketchikan Moose Lodge 224. I believe that you guys are going to be talking about our liquor license today. We had gotten behind last year on our sales taxes and our property taxes. Right at the moment, I believe that we are current with our payment plan, and we have no reason to foresee getting behind on our sales tax. And we also have a prudent plan in place for getting our property tax paid off by about the beginning of May, middle of May, which is... We've got money earmarked to sign, so we're working on paying all that off. Like I said, I believe we're all current with everything. I would like to point out that we, you know, take a lot of pride in being a part of the community. I've been working there myself for a little over a year, and since I've been there, we've donated time and time for different community service projects. The St. John's Church, we have a lot of members that are youth sport coaches. We also, we've put money towards, we've donated money towards the Ketchikan Youth Initiative. We try to keep donating money towards senior services. That's one big thing for the Moose is senior services and youth sports. We have also donated resources and money to rendezvous and homeless shelter. We try to be part of the community, and our liquor license is a big part of how we make the money to do that. So, as I said, you know, we're keeping up with our payments, and we were behind. And part of that was in trying to grow and get bigger. And now we gotta, we're dialing back and getting you guys paid back so that we can do that again in a improved fashion. So I would just like to, just like to point that all out to the council and hope that can maybe, hope you think about that when you make your vote today.
Any questions for Landon? Thanks, Landon, for coming. I think it's Rebecca? Did I get the right name? I can't pronounce the last name. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. This is my first time coming to a council meeting, and I'm excited to be here. So my last name is Espy Orinson, so it's Rebecca Espy Orinson. And I am here on behalf of myself, and I just wanted to speak also on the top, not also on the topic, on the topic of Ricardo Barquez's mural that is being considered for the Ketchikan Airport. I've been in Ketchikan for, I'm working on my ninth year mostly, and one of the things that I find to be, the most positive things about our community is our dedication to the arts. It's part of what has kept me here for as long as I have been here. And especially right now, we're looking at the possibility of the arts taking a big cut nationally with the, you know, the national endowment on the art, of the arts on the chopping block. And so to me, this is one of those times where as small communities, that's where we can really make an impact in continuing to keep art at the forefront. To me, art is often the soul of a community, reflects the people in it, whether that's music, or theater, or visual arts, or, you know, any number. We have dance. It's often, we have people in this community who work really hard, and it's a really wonderful way in which, after a long day's work, we can have some enjoyment. Whether that's producing in our own time or experiencing, you know, it for ourselves as community members. I went inside Ricardo Barquez's mural in the Arts Council when it went up. He was working days at a time to get this together, and it was a wonderful experience to see the process of an artist. And the product at the end is this absolutely incredible, beautiful, detailed mural of our community. And so the location of the airport, I understand that is borough property, and I would like to advocate it for it to be in that location anyway because it represents Ketchikan as a city. It's not really a mural of the borough, it's a mural of our city. And when anyone comes and sees our community, and it's so vibrant, it's full of life. From my perspective, it just embodies to me what I look at when I look at Ketchikan from that perspective. It feels full of color and life, and I think that's what Ketchikan represents. And so I'm really hoping that the city can move forward and acquire that beautiful piece of art that represents us and then also moves forward in continuing to support arts in our community, continuing to make that commitment and that dedication that keeps so many of us here and keeps so many of us happy and vibrant in this community. So I did drop off a few of you, there's just some quotes here that are about why art is important. And the one that's highlighted at the top, I think, is the one that is speaking to me the most right now. It says, "Art is a nation's most precious heritage, for it is our works of art that we reveal to ourselves and to others, the inner vision which guides us as a nation. And where there is no vision, the people perish." So that really speaks to me, and I think that also speaks to a lot of the committee of Ketchikan. So thanks so much for hearing me out, and I hope we can move forward with that. I'd love to see it over there, so.
Thank you for coming. Felix, Mr. Assemblyman.
Get him.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. So firstly, I'd like to speak on behalf of a friend of mine, Rachel Brightard, who isn't able to make it here tonight. She wants to remind all of us that her mom visited during Ricardo's Barquez's exhibition, and the first thing she said when she saw the mural as it came together was that, "Oh, this reminds me of the stories of Ketchikan DVD project that we had." You know, right on the onset, it speaks to the spirit of this town, as Rebecca Espy Orson said. So rightfully put, it represents the soul of the town. So that's the one aspect I'd like to speak on behalf of someone else. And finally, my name is Felix Wong, 469 Forest Park Drive. I'm here speaking, speaking for myself. I've come before you this evening, representing myself as a member of the public and as an artist to advocate for the arts. It has come to my attention that Ricardo Barquez's mural seems to be too expensive, and it appears that the Arts Council stands to gain much from its sale. As someone who has opened an exhibition right after Ricardo Barquez and went through the process of learning about what goes on in an exhibition, I can tell you that those assumptions stated above are wrong. Firstly, let's address the Arts Council's cut. For every sale made through the exhibition at the Main Street Gallery, the exhibition contract and guidelines entitles the Arts Council to just 25% of the sale price. Can think of it as a consignment fee. With regards to consignment fees, a basic Google search would yield you a fair amount, to be between 30% plus $15, right up to 60%. So I think 25% cut is fair. And why is that fair? Well, the Arts Council is considered a nonprofit organization, but it doesn't take an economist to understand that it costs money to keep doors open. It costs money to run the wealth of art programs that we have here in this town that helps us keep cabin fever at bay. It costs money to run classes for kids who want to paint, who want to make a mess, but not at home. And it costs money to, to help develop our town's spirit, our soul, our image. As I speak, the Arts Council staff, as you see here, they were just done with a diversity and inclusion program. That's an additional venue-added grassroots program to encourage other people to think about expressing through the arts and maybe even let off steam in a healthy way instead of, instead of turning to drugs or something else that's unhealthy and exciting. Now to Ricardo's cut. If you're not aware, Ricardo's exhibition involves him gathering materials which are bought within city limits and are subject to sales tax, and spending the rest of the time, 25 days, to paint the mural. So we were all free to swing by and see the progress as it happened. As Rebecca has explained, it's a sight to behold. Watch it come from pieces of plywood, a black base layer, then we start seeing clouds, basic forms of the mountains, and then we see our cityscape come to life. That's, that's like watching, watching a child grow. And as someone who has swung by the gallery regularly because, you know, I'm there to set up for my show as well and prepared for my show, I get to see that Ricardo Barquez spends an average of 10 hours a day, at least. And towards the grand opening, maybe even more, because, you know, someone like myself, I'll swing by and I'll chat with him, and I'll just suck up one hour from his day, and that costs him progress. But yet, even though it costs him progress to interact with people, he accommodates cheapo. If you ever get to look at the mural in detail, you'll see that the Arctic Bar is depicted accurately with a little lady with blonde hair waving. I bet it's Paula. And if you look further into it, you get to see this very building, City Hall, represented accurately as well in its current color and form. So I'll say that's a lot of work that goes into it, and work, work has value to it. So let's say he takes 25, 10-hour days, and his cut, if you take the 75% cut, it amounts to about $45 an hour of work without benefits or additional perks. So if you ask me, this kind of cost has its value. It has its value because it's a painstaking process to capture a moment in time, a snapshot of our cityscape. And to me, that's worth it. I mean, let's think of other snapshots of moment in history. Think about your photos of your kids, photos of your grandkids. These moments in time won't happen again. So isn't, isn't a snapshot of our city as he saw it in 2016 valuable? On one hand, I understand that this is going to be installed at the airport as brought up by Rebecca, a borough facility. But let's put that notion aside for the moment and think about the arrival process. Where do people spend most time after they get off an airplane? At baggage claim. Would you rather they stare at a blank white wall, or would you rather have a beautiful depiction of our city in beautiful summer weather? Greet them as they wait for their baggage, which sometimes can be pretty aggravating in a crowd. I mean, how do we greet visitors? Welcome to a borough facility? No, we say, "Welcome to the city of Ketchikan." And what better way to paint a picture of hospitality than to have the mural installed right there where people are waiting? As much as I hate to dig this subject up, this contention reminds me of the borough's reluctance to fund our current public library. But still, there are some people in the Borough Assembly and myself who choose to advocate for the public library because it is there for the good of every resident and visitor. Therefore, I implore you to consider this matter for the good of every resident and visitor as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Felix. Is there any questions? All right. Mike Williams.
Thank you. My name's Mike Williams. I reside at 7390 South Thomas Highway. And I come to you tonight to talk about an item on your agenda, the Howling Elementary School student bus drop-off zone. And I'd like to give you a little background on that project that we've put together. I'm gonna read off a prepared statement so I don't mess this up, but just wanted to let you know that. So, Mayor and City Council, the school district is in the process of designing and constructing a new student bus drop-off zone for the Howling Elementary School. Howling Elementary School, the 62,500-square-feet facility constructed in 1960, serves 336 students in grades K through 6 and has nearly 70 staff members. When the school was first built, Berenoff Avenue was a quiet, one-way street, and the land around the school is relatively open. Traffic around the school is light, and parking behind and around the school is readily available. In the years since, Berenoff Avenue has become a very busy through street. For some time, the district has been concerned with the traffic safety around the school site. The main drop-off area is an inadequately sized lane created by a jog in the sidewalk along Berenoff Avenue. This area becomes very congested before and after school as district buses and an estimated 100-plus parents are dropping off and picking up students. The area is simply not large enough, and the mix of vehicles and students is an accident waiting to happen. The Howling School Safety Committee has been very concerned that a student will be injured or worse as a result of this congestion. In an effort to mitigate the problem, they instituted a crossing guard and a traffic direction program in the spring of 2016. However, it was clear by the end of the year that while helpful, this was an inadequate solution. A more permanent solution was required that would reduce the interaction of pedestrians, buses, and vehicles, and move the foot traffic away from the busy street. The school district has been in contact with City Public Works Director, and he advised us that we had to bring the changes before the City Council and get their approval and have a maintenance agreement signed off on because it would be encroaching on the city's right-of-way. So that's basically what I have for you folks. I will be in the audience when Mark presents the agenda item, and Trevor Sandy with Army of Engineering is also here if there's any questions that we can help you with. Thank you.
You bet. All right, that brings us to George Schaper.
Mayor and fellow councilmen, councilpersons, I should say. I'm George Schaper, reside at 935 Forest Avenue as a city resident and a borough resident at the same address. I would like to support your general government, new business, number one, which is the discussion of the city and borough working together to purchase the art for the airport. And I'd like to add to that discussion about how important this can be. The longer it's hanging, the more it becomes something that you can look back at when you look across the water, see what Ketchikan will look like in the future, and compare it to what it looks like now. And I think it has a lot of value for an historic document as well as being a piece of art. Unless you have any questions, I thank you for your time.
Thanks, George. Now, that brings us to, is Arizona Grace still here? Did they take off?
They're gone.
They're gone. All right, that brings us, I'm not sure, is it Joy or Josh? Josh? I can't read your writing, apologies.
I think it is Josh.
Everybody is Josh.
Don't jump to the hinges here, guys.
It's Joss. Joss. Joss Govers.
Thank you.
5210 Shoreline Drive. Wanted to come down real quick and discuss with you folks, or just mention to you folks that the Moose Lodge 224, you heard Landon speak earlier about the liquor license. I am a board member of, on one of the nonprofit boards that does receive significant support from the Moose. We're talking a few thousand a year, on average, that we get from the Moose Lodge. We don't come to you for money. We go to nonprofit, or to organizations like Moose, or the Eagles, or the Elks, and they're often more than happy to dish out funds. You know, and so it's just one of those things. I hope you guys see the value of what they do, that they're not the typical bar in town in operation. They're not like our friends down the street, or down the road here, or down the road there. These guys actually are a part of the community, these organizations like the Elks, or like the Eagles, or like the Moose. So I hope that you guys continue working with them to make sure that they stay current, not only get current now, stay current in the future, and keep them running. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Kathleen? The Colonel.
I'm Kathleen Light. I'm the Director of the Arts Council. I live at 410 Cedar Lower. I just want to introduce Ricardo Barquez, the artist of the piece that you're considering putting in the airport. And I want you to know that I will be here through your decision-making process if you have any further questions while you're discussing.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ricardo Barquez, the author of the mural we're going to discuss today for his final destination. I just want to say thanks, everybody, for the time, you know, you're having for this. And I would love to say a brief story of my time in Ketchikan. I've been here for 19 years. Came here as a commercial fisherman, and I was working on the Gulf by the time I came here. We delivered the last trip of our product to Zeta. We were just supposed to come here just to switch boat and go back to Kodiak. But when I seen this town, I was just gonna help myself and finally love and learn with the beauty of the town and the warmth of the people. So I quit my job on this boat, and pretty soon after, I find another job precisely in the Rio Grande, one of the oldest of the fleet. And I seen the potential, you know, for my, to develop my arts, you know, passion. And that explanation to paint the waterfront of Ketchikan in this particular work is because it's precisely this, my love of this town and my passion for history. And I see on this great opportunity to represent all this, I believe this town, and I see too, you know, it has fast transformation. And I find it can be like a historic document if I do, you know, what I did. So I thanks again, everybody, for your time, and, you know, I hope you have the best decision on this, and God bless everybody up here.
Thank you.
Ricardo's project was our first residency in the gallery, and the amount of hours that he put into this work and the love that he put into this work are, we were, it touched our hearts. And it's a special piece, and I would very much enjoy having any discussion with you guys when you get to the, to the item to help you understand what the piece is and its value.
Thank you. Trevor, did you want to speak now, or? Come on up.
Trevor Sandy, 15639 North Thomas Highway. Good evening, everyone. I'm the engineer for the Howling Drop-Off Zone reconfiguration, I guess, which is a collaboration of primarily the borough district maintenance. My work started by reviewing a traffic study that was prepared by a firm back east that spent some time watching how kids were dropped off and picked up and the way the buses and the traffic interacted. And this basic geometry is largely there. And this basic geometry is largely their design, not mine. We're just trying to make all the turning radiuses and everything work. The premise of the design is to basically get parking off of Baranoff. It's a very dangerous way it is now. It's, there's lots of opportunities for kids to jump out into traffic with no one watching them. And the biggest thing that is created is about 1,000 feet of bus drop-off in queue and for people to wait. We have a very long through lane and a very long drop-off lane, longer even than Ketchikan High School, with plenty of opportunity for parents to pull in and wait for their kids. What we've done, I did a quick count before I got up here, and I believe we have 47 teacher parking spaces on the Howling property at the moment. And when we're done, we're one or two shy of 90, I believe. Right now, we're somewhere between 25 and 35 on the street depending on what you consider a parking space. And we're getting rid of those completely and we're adding 11 next to Revilla and I guess we'll offset that. So, we're positive somewhere between 15 and 20 spaces after the project is completed with no parking on Baranoff. The width of Baranoff is, it varies right now, but it's primarily about 36 feet. We're gonna narrow that 6 feet to 28 on about half of the project and we're gonna narrow that, I guess 10 feet or 12 feet to 24, I think was the final verdict the other day. So we're gonna widen the driving surface. Right now, it's about 20 feet if you consider the cars that are there. And we're gonna widen that to 24, increase visibility, and then 28. There was a fair amount of discussion. Councilmember Seadson met with us as well as the Public Works Director the other day trying to figure out what the optimum width was. And I don't think we all agreed, but these were widths that we think will work well. It's, it's hard to find the sweet spot where if you leave it too wide, people might be tempted to park on the side of the street, which we don't want. So, we think this'll work. It's gonna keep good flow through there, good opportunity for plowing the snow to the sidelines while leaving a really good through lane. This varies a little bit from what's in your packet and the reason is we decided to take all of the on-street parking off the other day and we just doubled the width of the on-site lot where the main teacher parking is. So that lot would be basically dedicated only to teacher use and then the lot that's down below is partially teachers and then partially for visitors. The lot across the street by Revilla, I guess, is a free-for-all, but that was intended to satisfy the apartment building and Revilla and the other kind of normal commuter traffic that would want to park on Baranoff. I'm gonna stick around if there's any questions.
What's the status of this process? Have we gotten to the planning commission and all that?
It's, yeah, the review's been extensive and this is the last stop. So, if this looks like it's a reasonable design, our goal was to advertise on April 1st and try to get a bidder before the seventh evening.
Thank you. Any questions, Dick?
Yeah, Trevor, just two. One, does the Borough School District have the money for it?
They do, yeah. Our budget, my first estimate is about $800,000, which was approved, I believe, like to probably speak to that. But I haven't run a new budget with this last iteration.
And then what's the project schedule?
Advertise in two weeks, receive bids probably around May 1, try to start construction as soon as school is out. The goal would be done by the time the first bus shows up.
Very good. Any other questions? Thanks, Trevor. All right, that's the last person on the list. Is there anybody here that didn't get a chance to sign up and like to dress? Come on up again, Mike.
Bobby McQuary, 724 Bayview. I'm here to speak to the value of that art installed at the airport. And I was sitting there thinking about, when I first came to Ketchikan, it took me about 15 years before I actually bought a house here. So I was traveling back and forth. Then I bought the house and then it took, you know, gradually from maybe a third of the time to half the time and so forth. Every time I landed at the Ketchikan Airport, my heart was here. And I can just imagine coming to see that picture of the city and how connected it would be for me each time I landed here. Now, that's just me, a person living here. But before I lived here and I came to the airport, I was so impressed with the native art and the different things that made Ketchikan unique. And I think this would add a lot of value to people's perception of who we are, not just a bunch of tourist shops, but a community that's connected through that mural. So beautifully done. And then I'd just like to speak to Ricardo for reaching out to our youth. He has a lot of ideas of how to work with our youth and work with murals in the youth center and have kids get into giving through their art, et cetera. So, I'm impassioned about the opportunity to see that installed and thank you for letting me talk to you about that.
You bet. Thanks, Robbie. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. That brings us down to consent agenda. I was wondering if you guys would like to add 6A1, that's the limitations on off-premise solicitation activities, second reading. Number three, the mortgage thing. And number four, the appointment to boards. And then 7A3, the surplusing the ambulance and sending it over to Quillaw. Does anybody have any problems with any of those?
What about 6A2?
Any of the Ketchikan Municipal? That's the...
It's a taxi cab. And handicap.
Oh, did you guys, we can do it if you guys don't have any comments on it. Okay, we did. We'll add that too. Thanks, Dick. 6A2 also. All right, do we have a motion to consent?
Your Honor, I move with consent.
Moved in second. And Madam Flip, can you read all these items?
Approval of minutes, regular City Council made in March 2, 2017, designating April 15 through April 22, 2017 as Spring Cleanup Week. Award of 2016 Hazardous Household Waste Collection and Removal Agreement, Carson Dorn, Inc. 2017, 2019, Ketchikan Fire Department Medical Director's Services Agreement Renewal for Mark Dumis, MDFACEP. He's got lots of, and FAAEM behind his name. Ordinance Number 171843, Negotiation of an Agreement with the Improved Order of Redman for Improvements to the City's Main Street Parking Lot in Exchange for Certain Real Property and Authorizing the City Manager to Replant the City's Parking Lot, property adjacent, the Improved Order of Redman's property located at 342 Main Street, first reading. Revocation Unlimited Permit to Encroach on City Property, Ketchikan Gateway Borough School District. Memorandum of Agreement Between the City of Ketchikan Fire Department and the U.S. Department of Commerce, National Marine Fisheries Service, Office of Law Enforcement for Shared Use of NOAA OLE Marine Vessel Dock Facilities. Ordinance Number 171842, Repealing Subsection 9.54.04OE of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Limitations on Off-Premise Solicitation Activities, second reading. Ordinance Number 171841, Amending and Adding New Sections to the Ketchikan Municipal Code, Chapter 5.4, entitled Public Vehicles Concerning the Issuance of Accessible Taxi Cab Endorsements and Regulations, second reading. Ordinance Number 171838, Amending the Ketchikan Municipal Code 14.40 to Increase Rates and Fees for Use of Mortgage Facilities, Harbor Facilities, and Harbor Master Services, second reading. Appointments to Boards and Commissions, Mayor Williams. And Ordinance Number 171845, Declaring a 1996 Ford F-350 Ambulance as Surplus and Authorizing Donation of the Vehicle to the City of Quillaw, first reading.
Dick?
One point of clarification, the map on the wall is the one we're approving, right?
We did, the one that was in our packet.
That's the one for Howling.
I believe so.
That one there is the one that they spoke to.
Which is the one I have in my packet here?
That's the one. We didn't get the new one.
Oh, I know.
This is the new one.
Okay. Is that new?
No. It's the old one, too. I don't think I exchanged it.
So what's the difference between this one and that one? Trevor, who are you? Anybody?
Mark, Mark can do that.
There are two main differences. The original width that we came up with for Baranoff was 24 from one end of the project to the other. There was concern that that was too narrow. So, half of the project is now 28 and the other half stayed at 24. The east end closest to Ka High used to have some angled parking in the actual drop-off zone. After a lot of discussion, we decided with the angle, parking was problematic with people trying to back, back, back out into the buses. So we flopped that parking and made it perpendicular on the upper area and just basically moved the retaining wall. So now it's an unobstructed, nearly 1,000-foot-long drop-off zone.
And then that 54 spaces, you know, the parking up top right now, is the other part only gonna be on the lower end or, I mean, are you guys going to have two different levels?
Yeah, so the upper parking is gonna stay at the same level it's at now and it's just getting a lot wider. Right now, it barely accommodates the cars that they shoehorning up there. And then the lower parking will stay even with the basement level of the school. So both levels will be ADA accessible when there's an elevator if you want to go in between floor.
Anybody have any questions? Thanks, Trevor. Anything else on the consent agenda? Questions on? Seeing none? Call the roll.
Isim? Yes. Seadson?
Yes.
Keifer?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Who's?
Here.
Zingy?
Yes.
Hey, that passes 7-0. That brings us down to 7A1, new business, discussion of city of Ketchikan, Ketchikan Gateway Borough, purchase of Ricardo Burquez, Ketchikan Waterfront mural. Councilmember Isim.
I have more pictures because I know some of you gave yours away last time I collected them, so I've got one here that everyone can go ahead and look at that again. As was stated here tonight, the Cooperative Relations Committee made a decision to forward this to both bodies to see if the City Council and the Assembly was willing to put in $7,500 each in order to purchase this piece of artwork and put it up in the airport where you see it. I am, I'm in total support of this. I, I think it's a beautiful piece. I've, I don't think you'll hear from anyone that I stay in Ketchikan because of the weather, especially in the last two weeks. You're definitely not gonna hear that from anyone. But when you ask people why they're here, it's either the people or because of the surroundings or it's a combination of both. And that is art. When people say, "Yeah, I'm just gonna go for a drive," or "Did you see that?" Or you see all kinds of photographs on Facebook. Everyone here is an amateur photographer because of where we live. And that is art. That's nature's art. And I believe this area also puts the same emphasis on public art. I believe it's important myself. And the reasons that I've seen in the past for opposing a piece of artwork, the two main reasons, we don't have to worry about here. One of them is, it's ugly. I remember when the rain gauge was being discussed, I wasn't on the council at that time, but I remember reading that one council member actually said, plain and simple, "I don't like it. It's ugly." The other reason was that it wasn't a local who was doing the artwork. It was an artist that was, I don't even think he was from this country or they were from this country, it was another country, right?
Netherlands, Dutch.
Netherlands. Okay, right. We don't have those two things to worry about. It's a local artist. I don't believe that it's an out, in fact, I think it's, I think it's way under what you would normally see for a piece of artwork like this. I, I know that a lot of times that an artist sets out to do a piece of artwork, they have no idea it's going to be a masterpiece. Once it's finished, then you, they realize or the community realizes, people realize, this is a masterpiece. And I believe that's what we have here. One of the other forms of opposition that I've heard is that it'll set a precedence and other artists won't like it. We have heard from several artists tonight that are in support of this. And I was so glad that artists came forward to speak tonight to say that they're in support of this particular art piece to go in the airport. And it's for those reasons that I'm gonna support this.
Anybody else?
You need a motion. You have got a motion.
Oh, I should've had a motion.
That's fine. Where is he going? If you want to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that the City of Ketchikan puts in $7,500 toward this piece of artwork to go in the airport.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We didn't second it. One thing I want to add, I also got, I've been in contact with Shirley White who has Mark Wheeler's original, one of the same thing, that landscape of Ketchikan that's also available for sale, too. I guess she used to have that out, the Narrows, out there, but she also says it's available for purchase, too. I wanted to pass that on. Dick?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna admit that this is probably a very good picture and it really represents Ketchikan well, but I will not support spending city money on purchasing this and hanging it. We got too many other things that are, in my opinion, more important. And if it's something that we've maybe set up earlier, it may have been okay, but I just, even though it's only $7,500 and we can probably find it somewhere, but I just, I cannot support it. And I guess the people I've heard from taxpayers are, do not support it. So I'm not gonna support it.
Judy?
Yeah, I'm not gonna support this. I think it sets a precedent. Again, it comes back to people have to follow a procedure and we didn't commission this piece. And I think that if we're going to do something, it has to be available for everyone to apply. So I don't think it's right for us to buy this piece and not look at buying all the other pieces that get shown. I just don't think, that's just my opinion and I'm not gonna support it.
Anybody else?
I got a question. Kathleen? So, this is what you said was the first resident artist in the Art Council over there to put a project together and paint something on-site. What was the plan for it?
There was no plan. This was, the end goal was the celebration, the opening of the gallery. We did not plan for anyone to purchase this. It was, has been for sale. I mean, obviously, any piece in the gallery is for sale. Artists put pieces in the gallery to sell them. As it started to evolve, people were coming to the gallery. This should be somewhere that the community can see it. This should be in the airport. This is an obviously exceptional depiction of what our community not only looks like but feels like. And so, we had no intention, I mean, it never, you know, it was a gallery exhibit. That's what it's for. The, I believed and invited all of you to come and look at it. I think I invited all of you individually to look at it because it's beautiful. I invited the Borough Assembly to come and look at it because it's beautiful. And from there, the Cooperative Relations Committee took the process. So, I know that people think that the Arts Council or, you know, will receive all of the money. We will not receive all of the money, obviously, as you guys know. And this was not something we built a project... And this was not something we built a project for so that, so that a piece, an artist could come to you and sell a piece of artwork. That's not something we did. It evolved because it, it is a beautiful piece. And people recognized right away that the community should be able to see this piece. The residency and the arts council, we've been trying, as you know, for a long time to build a space in Ketchikan where artists can create. And so we built a month into our gallery season so that an artist could come and create a piece and people could see it happen. And that was part of the magic of this piece. Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Kathleen, has the arts council and Mr. Berquez considered any other alternatives other than government funding of the painting?
To put it in the airport, the, you know, it would need to be owned by the municipalities.
Beyond it being in the airport, just any other opportunities or considerations or options considered?
I'm sure Mr. Berquez would sell it to whoever would like to buy it. It is a twenty-foot mural which limits the places that it can be. It is a mural of downtown Ketchikan, which isn't necessarily other, anything that an individual may want as it's about a community, so it's a community piece. So, yeah, I'm sure he would sell it to whoever would like to buy it. And, you know, if, I don't know too many people with twenty-foot walls, but.
Okay, General Lee?
I have to admit, it, it's nice to see other artists stepping up to the plate for, for his work. And I, and part of me is, not that I don't want to do this, but part of me is also, I understand where Judy's coming from on the president thing. Where it could have been the other way, you have ten artists gone, what about my work? So, I mean, just, just, that's kind of where I've been kind of seeing on the fence and actually love the piece. I'm wondering, even if you don't get enough hands, if it could be possible, and this is just a thought that I brought up to Julie, is what if the borough, and I think the borough and city should work together, it shouldn't be us against them and against us. But the, the idea of even having that space as a revolving, if, if you can't purchase, being able to have it showcased in a spot, if you'd be willing to do something like that, or having that space at the airport where it's a different artist every, you know, where there's that revolving visual, just a thought on that. But an idea of making it into a, a space where every time you pull in, you never know what you're going to see of other artists or, or his work, I mean, I'm just, I don't know if I have enough hands.
One thing I, I noticed is there are no negatives up here. No one spoke negatively, and that's significant in my experience at this situation. So, and, I mean, I've not seen anything negative. I know Mr. Kous mentioned that he had had negative comments about it, but I certainly have not, no one's, no one's said anything negative to me, especially the artists who love this piece. So, for what that's worth.
Anybody else? Thanks, Kathleen.
You bet.
All right, Bob?
Yeah, I wish, I wish we were building a new building and we're commissioning artists to do that, but we're not. And I think there would be a, an opportunity to get a project in the community where people would donate to even have that thing put there. I myself would donate to that project, I think, but I, I have had a few people call me in regards to spending money on putting art over the airport and they didn't think it was a good idea. They, they, they didn't agree with it. And I just listened to their comments. But normally, the city would go out and commission a piece. It's not that we normally get into the position where we're just buying art. And there's nothing built into the budget to purchase this type of thing, so at this time, I'm not going to support it either, I guess. And it's not that I don't like the piece and I don't like what the art council is doing. Again, I'd be willing to help with raising some funds to, to purchase that and get it over there.
Dick, did you have one more comment?
Well, yeah, and how immaterial it is, I don't know, but, you know, several of you have been here around here a long time and you've watched that airport change. And I've watched it change in the thirty-seven years I've been here. And what, part of what concerns me, while I still not going to support it, is this becomes another piece of something on the wall and in ten years they will remodel it and it'll, it'll be in the back room. And I'll guarantee it'll happen. There's, every one of you that's been around here, while I've seen very good displays and things enter that building and you give it five, six, seven years and it's gone. And sometimes you don't even know where it's gone. So I, I mean, I think it needs a more appropriate home, if that's the right way. And I'm not knocking the borough, I just think it needs a more appropriate home.
Any last comments? Call the roll.
Laura?
No.
Zingy?
No.
Seaberton?
No.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kous?
No.
Okay, motion fails four to three. That brings us to seven A two, well, we have resolutions, A and B, resolution seventeen twenty-six fifty-eight, opposition to send the bill fourteen, House Bill one thirty-five relating to the transportation network companies and transportation network company drivers. The other one is B, which is also bringing up concerns about local regulatory oversight being added instead of just outright being against the, to bills. Do we have a motion for either one of those?
Your honor, if I may offer a suggestion?
Yeah.
There's a, a letter from the Juno manager to the honorable Sam Kito, who is the chair of the Labor and Commerce Committee where this bill is, is right now. And I believe there's a Labor and Commerce Committee on this, meeting on this tomorrow. And it mirrors a number of our own concerns in regards to taxes, registration of drivers as far as the business license is concerned. You know, the ability in an act of course ordinance, not specifically targeted prohibiting the transport network, but conducting business in the municipality, going onto their docks and different things like that. And they get us through a letter. And I think that until we see what comes out of the Labor and Commerce Committee, because from what I understand, these issues are being addressed and there will be a public hearing on that tomorrow.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, and so I'm not so sure that passing a resolution at this time, not knowing what that final bill's going to look like, would, would be beneficial. We have time after the conference tomorrow and, and seeing what the final bill looks like to so we know what we're protesting. Because I think they are going to put some local stuff in there. But there's been some comments about, you know, like vehicle inspections. Well, there's a lot of commercial vehicles running within the community of Ketchikan, but DOT does the inspection, the city doesn't do this. There, and, and I think they do them on a number of types of vehicles, buses and commercial vehicles, all kinds of that. And as long as there's being inspection done, I don't, I don't have to do that, I'm, I'm fine with that, as long as it's being appropriately done. There's been questions about background checks and, and the ability to, to do some of that stuff. Now, in the mayor, the Juno mayor, you know, you have, the state of Alaska requires fingerprinting and background checks for all kinds of individuals, masseuse and, and people that teach CDL classes and who knows what. So there, there's a request that they at least make the minimum standard that they're doing for items like that regarding background checks because they are concerned about the welfare, the, the riders that are going to be riding with these people, make sure that it packs all the muster that they need to. So I think at this point, if we're going to do anything, I think that we should direct our manager to write a letter, but I think it's premature until after we hear what comes out of Labor and Commerce.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, whatever, I have been following the Juno end of it, that we also, I mean, just what we do, you know, I like number B here, where we can, you know, there's some local direction.
Local control.
And I think we don't know anything by the next council meeting?
Yeah, I believe that it'll, it'll be, I think we'll be doing something before that maybe, but I think that we, after the, after the hearing, that there should be collaboration maybe between you and Carl and wrap the letter to the appropriate bodies.
Dick? General Lee?
Yeah, I, I think a letter is probably most appropriate, but I think that we ought to try to get that letter to them before this meeting tomorrow. Because if they're going to tweak it, which is, I, I think they're going to try to tweak it, and I think probably several of us may have got a phone call from one of the senator's aides that is, is working this. And basically, my comments to them was I, we were concerned about, you know, vehicle standards and background checks and, and being able to collect local taxes. And I said, I don't care who does it, as long as it's done. And, and, and if that is still what we're concerned about, and, and to me, it's five or maybe six of those bullet points is in there, if we just reiterate them in a simple letter, we think these things need to be addressed in the bill and then see what they come up with. And then we can either say yea or nay, but I argued with the guy a little bit and I said, those birds can collect those taxes just as easy as anybody can, so don't give me no nonsense about the internet and all that crap. And, and they can do it, it's just a matter of making it work. So to me, but to me anyway, we need to express here some things we're concerned about, hope you put them into, deal with them in the bill, and just a simple letter. And then maybe a, a little gig is who's going to enforce it, them or us?
General Lee?
To add to that letter, I would stipulate the, the fact that the ADA regulations do not apply to them. The other thing that doesn't apply to them apparently is insurance. What I find interesting about that is the fact that when, when I was running my kid and other kids in the school district to events, I had to show proof to the school district, and this was in Kenai, of having a million, coverage, full coverage of up to a million dollars to have six, five kids in that car. So I think that's something that could be added on. I mean, I just found it interesting reading that they don't have to because they're not constantly transporting.
Bob?
My understanding, and, and I've looked into the bill itself, and one of the biggest part of that bill is the insurance issue, is they have a three-tiered insurance issue. Uber works on the internet. An Uber driver can't drive down the street, pick up the passenger off the street. They can't, somebody can't hail him and say, hey, I need a ride or whatever. And so they go by the use of their app. In other words, the driver has to sign on in order to be working, in order to get those dispatches. And they have three tiers. The one tier, the car just covered under normal insurance process. Tier two is when he receives a dispatch, when he signs on to actually go to work, it goes to another tier. And tier three is when he's transporting the passenger, he has the million dollar liability. And that, that's a big thing for the state to make sure that their, their insurance is in place to do that. And that's what I've understood, so I, I take that the insurance issue is being addressed on the state level.
Okay, so do you guys want us to send a letter up from Carl real quick on hitting some of these points or, Dave?
Yeah, I guess, I, you know, I, I agree with Bob's point to, to, to a point, but I also agree with Dick that, you know, there's a good chance by the time it comes out of committee, it might already be fairly well cast in stone at the point that we can't, we may not have any, any, any better. So I guess I would like to see our, our opinion about, about the retaining some sort of local control over this process, which to me is probably the base issue. You know, if we're going to, if we're going to, if we're going to have control over cabs and whatever else, we can't just have something pop into town if we have no control. And that to me still remains the biggest, the base issue.
So you guys want to do resolution, you guys want to send a letter real quick?
I have a hand for sending a letter. The letters.
Carl, you know what, we have the local control, we shall send a letter, post haste before the hearing.
Your honor?
Yes.
It doesn't make any sense to send somebody to, because they're having this as a public hearing at three forty-five tomorrow, I think it is, to speak on our behalf.
Well, you could have volunteered.
No, I didn't say I was going to.
I could have heard him say volunteer.
Is that a, is that a rhetorical statement?
Yes.
I'm going to be there anyway because I, I'm going after the man I hope to be at three fifteen. They moved everybody.
General Lee or Bob, either one wants to speak?
They will. I'll try to make it.
Thank you. All right, we've got direction there to management. That brings us down to item seven eight four, rectangular rapid flash beacon installation on state right of way. Right there. Yes.
The rectangular flashing?
Yeah, we need to, okay, your honor, I move the state council direct staff to submit a formal request to the Department of Transportation and Public Facilities for the installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacons, RRFBs on Tongus Avenue, as chairman of the council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We didn't second it. Dave, do you want to start it or?
I guess just that, you know, I suspect it'll probably turn out to be more like number two, but if we don't start with number one, we're going to end with number six. So I, I think we should start the process by saying, hey, we want you guys to do this. Then, then we'll negotiate for the next six months of what happens, but that's, that's what I picked out.
Carl?
Mr. Mayor, I just asked for clarification. At least based on the feedback, our office has got the, the intersection, we've gotten the most comments on our, by the hospital, down by the shipyard, and so I would suggest you might want to start with those.
Do we have to get permission from the state to put those there?
Absolutely.
Can we also add, I mean, we might not do it, but also add the, by the Carlin, by the tunnel and by Tetsudas? Tetsudas is one I really think we should have them. And then we can go by what we, we have permission, then we can do what we want, when we can afford it or want to do it, I guess. But those are the ones I've all heard of. And I know the lady out here by the tunnel, I mean, my friend hit her, so I know that it's a problem.
We can make that request if that's what the council wants.
And it doesn't mean we're going to do them all, it just gives us, at least they can say, yeah, if you guys want to put them in, we can, and we have the option to.
I, I got to ask for further clarification. Are you asking just for permission for the city to install them at City?
Well, we asked the state to them and they say no, then we say.
We need to officially ask the state though first.
Yes.
Because.
Yeah, like, I'm glad they brought that up because that was my concern. This is a state highway. And if we identify that there are issues in regards to pedestrians crossing, that's a state responsibility. The city of Ketchikan, for a number of years, used to paint their crosswalks at an expense that, you know, we weren't necessarily reimbursed. And, and now they're, we, we, you know, shed that responsibility and now they're responsible for that. And I think that we took on a, a certain liability when we did that. If, if we were using laminates and somebody slipped on them, we could be held responsible because we're going to involve them, similar to their drains and stuff. But I don't, I don't want to take the state out of this equation. I think it's their responsibility. And as heavily traveled as it is, as bad as our weather gets, I think they do have a responsibility and I think that's what the request should be.
Anybody else, General Lee?
Well, I, I did get a response from the, the little email I sent the, the head up there. And it was that there was no record of accidents on our highway in the past year. And we don't do forty miles an hour on our highway, so, which I know, wow, we all know nobody does twenty-five. I brought up the two incidents that happened down by Pioneer Home, one of them I witnessed, which was the person in a scooter that got hit. And then the fact that down at AMP is bigger, the guys go over there for lunch and dinner. It's really, it's so dark right there, and then now we got that hotel. Um, and then the fact that down at A and P is bigger, the guys go over there for lunch and dinner, it's really, it's so dark right there, and then now we got that hotel. Um, I didn't put that part in because it wasn't up at the time, but, um, now you got that hotel and people trying to get in and out of there. Um, basically it was kind of a, a shutdown response of, um, we don't want to do this, so, but.
We'll officially ask them.
I just thought, yeah, I was like, this is interesting, because they said, he said he looked at all the newspapers and didn't see any acts and it was reported.
Anybody else? Dick?
Yeah, I, I think as part of what we're doing here, we've talked about a half a dozen locations that we're going to push them on, but I think we ought to push them real hard on. They're going to reconstruct this road right in front of us, turn it to Tetsudas, and we ought to try to really nail them down from one right here to tunneling one down there. Because that's not how, that's a piece of cake for, in the construction, except they don't, may not, may not do it. So how we pressure them on two different situations, I don't know. Carl's got it in hand.
All right.
He's only been fighting DOT for twenty years.
Let's call the roll to get something set up to the state.
Isom?
Yes.
Saberton?
Yeah.
Kifer?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to nothing, brings us down to seven eight five, liquor license renewal, Ketchikan Loyal Order of Moose Lodge two-two-four. Uh, we've got three different alternative motions, we can approve, approve with everything paid, or protest. What would you guys like to do?
Your Honor?
Yes.
If I'm going to the City Council, approve the renewal of the Club License, Ketchikan Loyal Order of Moose Lodge two-two-four Liquor License contingent upon satisfactory process in which they have, uh, to pay their delinquent property tax. I think their sales tax is correct.
Correct.
Um, and.
Joe, do you have a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Bob.
And I talked to the clerk, we have sixty days, is that right? Or something like that? And, um, as you said, you have a plan to get this paid up, is that, is that correct?
Sixty days, yeah.
All right.
Right, hot dog of the week.
So I think, I think as long as there's a plan in place and it, it comes about, I, I don't want to hamper them by, um, protesting and stopping their liquor license, because that's what's going to gain the revenue to get them product under taxation.
Anybody else?
Your Honor, I feel like I should oppose this just to support KJ's, I have a problem with him, but I'm, I'm going to agree with Bob on this one. Let's give, let's give him the time, time, Danny, because it's not.
Can you choose a member?
So they already.
I am not a member.
Sales tax is up now?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Sales tax is okay, there's, there's.
Any other questions? Call or roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Saberton?
Yeah.
Kifer?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming.
Thank you.
Um, that brings us down to seven B one, water rating pre-seaf food processing large commercial customers.
There's no action, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
It's just an update for Council.
Thank you. Who's been ill?
Um, Finance Director and Water Division Manager is out of town.
Okay. All right, that brings us down to approval vouchers, daily news, two thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. Do we have a motion? Please.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move to approve vouchers to the Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of three thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moving second, a call or roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuss?
I have to?
We hit them fast.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Saberton?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing, brings us down to managers' reports. Carl, do you have anything to add?
Just to, Mr. Mayor, as I advised council members earlier today, this morning I did accept the resignation of the Museum Director, Lee Gray. We'll start the recruitment effort to fill that position, uh, next week. Uh, I'm confident that the, uh, temporary exhibit is on track and will be on time, as will the, the permanent exhibit. The only other thing I have, Mr. Mayor, uh, is at the last meeting, I did request a special meeting in the Council relative to an executive session to talk about collective bargaining with TPU, and just reiterating.
I've been going to planning commission meetings, I gotta go to the borough meeting, so as soon as I get done with these meetings, hopefully by next week, I'll order something up.
That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Um, anybody have any questions for Carl? Dave?
Yeah, I, just really quickly, I wanted to thank staff for the tramway up, update and clarification on that, that is always helpful.
Wait, Carl, what are we going to do with all those reserves we have? Six, seven, eight, nine, we're almost ten million. Good job. Oh, counting the, um, community develop two-point-six, I've, we're going to have thirteen million.
We need to go, please, to catch up with the previous mayor, though.
Okay. No, it's good to see the finances look good. We should have Bob Sikmar on. That's a joke. I'm sorry, I shouldn't be in the comedy business. Um, all right, that brings, that brings us to, city clerks file?
None, Your Honor.
City attorneys file? I don't see, he must be out of town. Future agenda items? We do have an executive session coming up. Mayors and, and council members comments, um, Dick?
Uh, nothing, Your Honor.
Judy?
Nothing.
General Lee?
Just the April sixth, um, I put a post.
Yep, we got it on our desk.
Choose respect marks, it used to be the governor's thing, but now, then, uh, taken on by four local, um, providers. Um, so I told them I would, I think it's actually during one of our meetings, so.
It is.
And I didn't catch that when she emailed it to me, so.
Go away where they want.
Yeah.
All right, um.
This weekend, the first city council on cancer, the, the big event at the Ted Perry Civic Center on Saturday night, and it's free, and it's their big auction. So encourage everybody to try to go.
Thank you very much. Bob?
Yeah, our roads are horrible.
Welcome to winter.
And it's not because of the snow, as I drive down Tongus Avenue and I watch the state try to throw coal patch into the unraveling streets, it's, uh, they don't pound it down at all, you drive over. It looks, I mean, it's amazing how bad it's eroded over the winter.
Yeah. You've just been doing this, right?
Yeah, and, um, the other thing is I want to, uh, I talked to the Public Works Director, but I know that it's the Water Department's responsibility to maintain that hole until I can patch it on Carolina, but I went home the other day and it was after hours and there were big rocks in the street, and the damage was substantial, so, uh, before quitting time at some point, they should at least take a check on it, make sure that it's still in good shape.
Man, those were boulders.
Those were boulders that were on the street, they were.
I drove around it, it was a, we'd be talking.
And, and I know that they have a plan to get it fixed, the concrete platen was down, but that still means they have to maintain the gravel that's in the hole and drive it to the surface.
Thank you, Bob. Mark?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Dave?
Yeah, um, first of all, I wanted to thank some, the council members, uh, Councilman Isom for, for shepherding through the, the art for the airport, and, and, I had, I spent many years trying to get things done over there, as, as you know, it's always a challenge, and frankly, I think it would, would have been a good, good choice, but, you know, obviously the council felt, felt the worries. Um, you know, there was an issue of juxtaposition, and it was entirely, entirely accidental, but I'm wondering if anyone else had the same reaction I did, right after we, oh, by, by the way, thank you, thank you for the big thing in the manager's report about the upcoming, uh, tsunami test, it's going to, it'll be very good to make sure everyone knows about that, because, because, Wednesday or Thursday this week, whenever you had your last one news, this, this week. So, I'm walking out of my, out of where I work, and I hear the, hear the sire, hear, hear the, and immediately I started hearing sirens, because apparently there was a fire at the Mary Frances. Uh, my first thought was, do I have to run down, I got to wipe it off the top. And then, and I talked to about thirty people, and I'm like, we, we thought it was really real, so, just, just keep my, I realize you got, you got to blow the sirens, but, but just, maybe, maybe not right as you're ending the, uh, the tsunami, or, because suddenly I, I think an awful lot of blood pressures went up, so just.
Um, anybody want to do the radio show tomorrow?
Got to work.
I'll call Debbie and let her know. Um, all right, um.
I suppose I can do the radio show.
I'll tell Debbie that you're coming, though, thank you.
All right.
And then, um, on the art, I'm still not over the Rangage, I'm proud to be called Mayor Rangage.
Drift for sure.
Yeah, that's the, all right, um, that brings us down to, um, executive session, we have a motion to go on executive quest, uh, session to consider legal financial issues associated with the sale effort phase conducted under the Brokerage Services Group between the City of Ketchikan, DBA, Ketchikan Public Utilities and Falkenburg Capital Corp.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move the City Council to declare that consistent with the General Manager's memorandum dated March third, two seventeen, in the best interest of the City Council, to review the status of the sale effort phase conducted under the Brokerage Services between the City of Ketchikan, DBA, Ketchikan Public Utilities and Falkenburg Capital Corporation, in executive session, in accordance to findings that the City Council go into the executive session, in accordance with KMC two-point-zero-four-point-zero-two-five, A-one and B-two and AS four-four-point-six-two-point-three-one-zero, C-one and three, and review the status of sale of the effort phase conducted under the Brokerage Services Agreement between the City of Ketchikan, DBA, Ketchikan Public Utilities and Falkenburg Capital Corporation, and auxiliary, auxiliary items described in the General Manager's memorandum dated March third, two seventeen, which include the need to discuss subjects and knowledge of which would have an adverse impact upon the finances of the City of Ketchikan, DBA, Ketchikan Public Utilities, and to receive legal advice related to such matters, protected under the attorney-client privilege.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moving second, call or roll.
Yes.
Saberton?
Yes.
Kifer?
No.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
No.
Kuss?
Okay.